Looking for a motion to approve the school board minutes from June 12th, 2025. Do I have a second? Roger. Any discussion, any omissions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Did you have something, Mason? You're abstaining, okay. Thank you. Before we get going on the rest of the agenda, I'd like to have a brief moment of silence for Pam Horden, who passed away, for all that she did for the community and writing for the school board for all those years. Thank you. No communications. Public comments. Anybody wishing to speak will get three minutes. I'm asking audience members to please not comment on somebody else's opinion. Address your comments to the chair. Amanda Ricci.
Thank you. I'm greatly concerned. This board is obligated to act swiftly to protect the community, students, and reputation of RSU 73. This board should set an example for our community's children. How can we enforce anti-discrimination and anti-bullying policies when our own officials violate them? At the very least, I formally request that this official be placed on suspension while an investigation ensues, if not removed from the board entirely, and I urge this board to develop a formal and specific policy about the conduct of board members, to include consequences of violating this policy. I ask this board, is it worth a lawsuit to protect someone just because they agree with you politically, or do you want to be known for being ethical and protecting our students and communities from dangerous individuals who cause fear and threaten and harass even teens in the community, teaching our children what appropriate behavior is, and standing up against bullies? I need you to ask yourself, what kind of official body shames a teen, discusses their personal lives, speaks on their parents to them, and then blames the teen for their own conduct as though they asked for it? This is victim blaming at its finest, and the adults were harassed in similar ways. The time to act is now. We have a code of ethics that was last reviewed February 24th, 2025. There have been several violations. Number two, not considering the impact that has had on LGBTQ plus students with very public harassment toward the community, such as a business displaying a pride flag, or how it impacts their education to be in fear of bullying and discrimination. The third section, frequently disparaging other board members' opinions, both verbally and on public Facebook pages, even stating things such as having you removed one by one. The fourth section, stating on many occasions, "I'm untouchable. There's nothing that anyone can do about my conduct. I can't be removed from the board," and stating things such as the school staff and the local citizenry on multiple occasions in writing and verbally. The seventh section, spending half a dozen hours on social media this past weekend discussing multiple complaints from multiple citizens, parents, business owners, and even teenagers, and recent RSU 73 graduates discussing complaints and harassing and threatening while doing such. The ninth section, this past weekend disparaging three school employees by name in writing with a community member on a public Facebook page while identifying self as a public official. On other occasions, there were two more that were disparaged verbally. The discrimination policy was last reviewed on April 10th, 2025, and has also been violated. Protected classes include sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, and more. Recently, a local business in our community was simply displaying a pride flag, and it was called a sex flag, and the business owners had been harassed because they do not feel the flag should be visible to students. I am asking you to develop a policy and take action swiftly. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Dean. Linda Dean.
My name is Linda Dean, a lifelong member of this district who lives in Livermore. I want to begin by echoing the powerful words shared by the former student board representatives at the last meeting. They spoke with courage and honesty, saying what many have been thinking, that students no longer feel safe or supported by this board. They said students now fear the board because meetings have become filled with arguments, violations of code of conduct, and discussion that do nothing to support education. They asked you to return to a place of respect, to focus again on students, and to act as true representatives of our schools. I and many others in the community agree with them. Now, I've learned tonight that this board may vote to reject state Title IX protections and instead align with a version that directly contradicts Maine state law. School boards swear an oath to uphold state law, and in Maine, that includes clear protections for LGBTQ plus students. I also understand that your own legal counsel advised you to follow the law, and that that advice was ignored. Instead, the board sought advice from a law firm recommended by a far-right political group, one that already helped RSU 70 become the only other district in Maine so far to reject Title IX compliance. This isn't about politics. It's about your legal and moral responsibility to protect all students and make sure RSU 73 is a safe, supportive place to learn. I want to close by sharing a quote from a letter to the editor published in the Bangor Daily on June 5th, 2025, written by the father of a transgender child who shared that at one time he didn't even believe transgender kids were real. I brought copies of the letter for you to read in full. Quote, "Maine is a place that understands freedom, and freedom means the ability to live as you truly are. That's a Maine I know. That's a Maine I love. Transgender children are just like your children and grandchildren. They have the same dreams, the same hopes, and the same right to be safe, seen, and supported." Unquote. That's a Maine I believe in, and that's a community I want to live in. I urge you to show our students, all of our students, that this board leads with integrity, compassion, and courage. Thank you.
Lynn Willette.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Willette. I am a resident of the town of Jey, and I taught in the school system here for 37 years. What considerations arise when a school board considers changing policy so that transgender girl athletes are carved out of the student population and prohibited from participating on girls' athletic teams? The Maine Human Rights Act makes it clear that this action is illegal, and these mandates are enforced by courts. But what about the humane qualities involved in this issue? These are children we're talking about. We must show acceptance and kindness, advocacy and support, affirmation and inclusion, despite our possible differing beliefs and opinions. If, through policy, you explicitly exclude a minority group of students, then you tell them they're not valued, respected, or important. You deprive them of recognition for who they are and the assurance that they are welcome in their school community. I have to believe that you have a place in your heart for the kindness toward these students. Please leave that space open for them as you consider this issue, possible compromises, and potential outcomes. And thank you so much for your time.
James Ferrari.
Yes? I didn't sign up to speak.
Oh, I have you on the.
I signed in.
Oh, okay. No problem. Madeline Labonte.
Hi, I'm Madeline Labonte. I live here in Livermore, and I want to talk today about how this school district is putting both the students and the district as a whole in a dangerous position. Title IX protects students' rights against discrimination, and it's very important to recognize that by ruling this back, you are committing a civil rights violation. I am aware that not everyone here cares about that, but here's what you should care about. Not allowing transgender individuals to use the bathrooms that they feel comfortable in puts us in a precarious legal situation. There is legal precedent in this state that suggests that the courts will rule in favor of those being discriminated against in these cases, with districts facing up to a $100,000 fine. The schools know this, and the school has already received legal counsel that told them to leave Title IX alone while the federal courts are finding their stance on these policies. For the time being, Maine state schools are legally obligated to follow Maine state law, which not only allows, but specifically states that transgender students must be allowed to use the bathroom that correlates with their gender identity. After hearing this very resounding no on whether or not to adopt a new policy, the district made the decision to seek legal advice from a firm that has no background in educational law and rather practices criminal defense and family law. This issue is absolutely a civil rights issue, but beyond that, it's a simple question of liability. Can the school afford the cost of a potential lawsuit, and is that really what we want our budget going to?
Michelle Bran.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Bran, and I'm the president of the RSU 73 Education Association. I'm speaking tonight because of my concerns about the agenda's reference to discussion and a possible vote on Title IX policy based on executive session legal advice earlier this evening. I was worried that members of the board might either be unaware of or unwilling to follow district policy and state labor law regarding the adoption, review, revision, or deletion of policy. You'll see that I've distributed copies of RSU 73's policy BGB-R outlining policy adoption procedures. Most specifically, I'm concerned that if a vote to revise policy occurs this evening, the board will be in violation of Section A 3, which requires that, quote, "At an appropriate stage in the policy consideration, the superintendent shall initiate contact with the representative teacher organization by sending a copy of the proposed policy to the association president to provide opportunity to meet and consult regarding any proposed new or changed educational policy." This particular section of the district's policy is required by Maine labor law, specifically described in Title 26 MRSA, Section 965.1C. I've also provided you with a copy of the specific legal statute in question. As the association president, I can affirm that this step has not yet been completed. This is not through any fault of Mr. Albert. The proposed revisions simply did not exist prior to the start of this evening's meeting. Furthermore, I want to point out that Sections B and C of the same district policy also require multiple readings of proposed revisions, along with those proposed revisions being listed on each board meeting agenda, presumably to protect transparency in the process and to allow members of our school community to consider and offer feedback on any proposed revisions. As some of you already know, I'm also a high school U.S. history and civics teacher here in the district, and a central theme of our curriculum is the importance of the rule of law in our democracy. The process can sometimes be long, time-consuming, and even frustrating, but the legislative frameworks that exist at all levels of government, including the policy used to govern school board action, are designed to ensure that all voices are heard. I hope that our board members are dedicated to modeling for our students what it means to be honorable public students and elected officials by following our district policies and state labor law as they apply this evening. Thank you for your time.
Jeff Bailey.
Hello, my name is Jeff Bailey, and I'm from the town of Jey. I'm here tonight to speak about the board's decision to seek additional legal opinions in regard to Title IX and its relevant policies. When it comes to sports competitions, it's a given that everyone follows the same set of rules. This is a lesson we learn at a young age, and we hope that students learn by example in classrooms and through extracurricular activities. Many conversations about transgender high school athletes have been around the broader issues of safety and fairness, but let's take a minute to look at the specifics of how a policy change might have to be reconciled. When RSU 73 participates in athletic events against other schools, we do so in the Main Principals Association Organization, a member-driven organization that sets the rules for those sports competitions. MPA, in consultation with the Maine Attorney General's Office and the Maine Department of Education, develops those policies, which include transgender athletes participating in high school sports. The rules clearly state that transgender and non-binary athletes can compete on teams that match their gender identity regardless of their sex assigned at birth. This is in line with the Maine Human Rights Act. If 73 chooses to change its policies to deny this rule, will our students be allowed to compete and participate? Will we have to form an entirely separate league in order to find other schools that will change to meet our views? If we do compete, will our students and coaches be forced to forfeit games if we disagree with the rules that another team that we are opposing is following, the MPA? Whose responsibility will it be to verify the proper gender of a student athlete? We are all interested in safety and fairness for all of our students, all of them. Why then would we alter our policies to write rules inconsistent with the organization in which we compete? We have to play by the same rules, rules that are backed by current state and federal laws and agreed to by the vast majority of schools competing with us. Recently, the Maine legislature even failed to pass changes in this law at the state level. Changing our policies would violate state and current federal law, and we may not exclude transgender athletes from the team that matches their identity, but it may shut out all of our athletes from competition if we're not careful. Thank you. Thank you.
Jane Costa.
Jane Costa from Jay. I'm just gonna not repeat what everyone else has said and just get right to it. As school board members, you took an oath. You took an oath in office to follow the laws of the state of Maine. And you have to do what you swore your oath to do. You have to follow the laws of Maine. You have to put aside your personal opinions and your personal differences and follow the law. That is what you are sworn to do. That is what the job is as a public servant, and that is what everyone in this community should expect of its public servants. Simply follow state law. The issue at hand is, in due process, going to be decided. But we have to let that due process play out, and when it does, then there'll be another opportunity to look at it again. But right now, state law is in effect, and it is what we should be following. Thank you.
Phoebe Pike.
Phoebe Pike, Livermore Falls. What I'm going to say may surprise most of you on the board. Let the laws protect her. Let them be put her in a position to resist and escape. Nothing is more legitimate than protecting the women and keeping ourselves honest. We are required to keep them separate, as is the. Oh, I'm sorry. This was the rules that they stated to keep women out of sports. My bad. To change Title IX means you're getting rid of alpine skiing, bowling, cheering, competitive cheering, esports, golf, wrestling, Nordic skiing, as well as many other sports if anyone contests it. Why? Because men and women are in co-sports together. Maine Human Rights Act of 2021 explicitly protects against discrimination based on gender identity. Maine has not enacted any laws specifically banning transgender athletes from participating in sports that align with their gender identity. As early as June 14th, our state voted against changing this. Maine Principal Association states it will follow state law that allows transgender athletes to participate. Whether you agree with that or not, that is the law. That is the rule set forth by our state, the same state that you are supposed to represent in our community. You can disagree with that if you wish, but you cannot, as officials who swore to uphold Maine State law as it pertains to schools, vote to change how you follow the law. Do so, you are opening us up for lawsuits. You are opening us up to have the schools closed because we cannot afford costly litigation. I understand that it costs $300 to confer with another lawyer. That's more than the entire esports budget. You spent the entire budget on one hour with a lawyer outside of our regular ones. For what? It's still being passed. They're still debating this. We're jumping ahead. Whether you agree or you don't, you have to understand that you are skipping so many steps. I'm not going to repeat them. You've already heard them. You already have the policies in front of you. What are we teaching our students? If you don't agree, skip it. That's not how the school runs. That's not how this community runs. That's not how the state or country runs. I know our board wants to do what's right for students. You wouldn't be in the positions you are in if you didn't care. But show the kids you care about all of them, not just the ones that you feel like protecting today. Protect all of them.
Joseph Bossi.
Joseph Bossi, Livermore Falls. Good evening, board members, educators, and community members. I'm here because we're still doing this. There's an ongoing deliberate attempt to strip transgender students of the right to participate in school sports in an effort that disguises itself as a concern for fairness, but is rooted in fear, misinformation, discrimination. At the same time, this board has knowingly given space to thinly veiled hate groups under the pretense of parental rights or protecting children.
It's not a weapon. It's. It's my work knife. That's it. You can have it. When you remove a transgender student from the field, you're not protecting fairness. You're erasing identity. You're telling a child that they cannot, that they're unfit. They can't play alongside their peers. This is not just exclusion. It's dehumanization. And when you allow speakers often affiliated with national hate groups to stand here and demonize transgender youth with selective science and inflammatory rhetoric, you're not hearing both sides. You're giving them legitimacy to discriminate. You're making this room, this school, this system unsafe for LGBTQ+ students and their families. What kind of message does this send? Schools should be the one place where every student, every single one, feels like they belong, where they're not reduced to a debate, where their existence is not up for discussion. And yet, here we are debating whether some students deserve equal access to sports while others use that debate to spread fear and division. You have a responsible, not just legally, but morally, to protect all students. That means rejecting policies that target transgender youth. That means setting clear boundaries around who and what you give a platform to. This means choosing courage over comfort. We're not asking for special treatment. We're asking for dignity, for inclusion, for the basic decency of letting kids be kids in the field, in the classroom, in every corner of this district. History will remember how you handled this moment. I hope you choose to be on the right side of humanity. Thank you.
Steve Bian.
Steve Bian, resident of Jay. I'm here tonight because I'm deeply concerned about the growing influence of an outside group calling itself Maine People's Rights in Education. Despite the name, this is not a grassroots Maine organization. It is backed by big money and part of a coordinated national effort to undermine public education right here in our community. This group and others like it are using fear, misinformation, and political pressure to try to control what happens in our schools. We've seen them push school boards to ignore the advice of their own legal counsel and instead rely on law firms, handpicked by far-right political organizations, groups whose goals are not about education, but about control. We've already seen this result. RSU 70 became the first district in Maine to reject Title IX protections for LGBTQ+ students against Maine law. And now this board may be considering doing the same. This is not leadership. This is caving to pressure from extremist politics at the expense of our students. Let's be clear. This is not about protecting kids or parental rights. It's about silencing teachers, banning books, and making schools unsafe for students who don't necessarily fit into a narrow mold. Maine has always valued fairness, decency, and community. Our public schools should be a reflection of that. They should be places where students feel safe, protected, and supported, no matter who they are. We cannot let outsiders with deeper pockets and dangerous agendas dictate what happens in our classrooms. Our schools belong to our students, our teachers, and our communities, not to out-of-state political operatives. I urge you, don't follow the example of RSU 70. Don't put this district on the wrong side of the law or the wrong side of history. Please stand with your students, with your educators, and with us in the community. Thank you.
Adam Gettle.
My name is Adam Gettle, and I live in Jay. Since my parents moved here when I was two years old, now with my wife for five years and two daughters, I have called Jay home. I attended Jay my freshman year, experienced the consolidation, and graduated from Spruce Mountain in 2014. In 2018, this district hired me as the boys varsity soccer coach. "You have a target on your back," the athletic director told me at the time. To my surprise, the team had led the league in red and yellow cards. I rebuilt the team primarily on the values of unity, integrity, and commitment, second to the rules and fundamentals of the sport. As a result, those boys were voted recipients of the MPA Sportsmanship Award in 2019. In 2021, the team ended the season with the best record the school has yet to see. Through the pandemic, I experienced firsthand what it was like to coach girls. Co-ed games were played on a weekly basis. These games were fun for the kids because they wanted to be there on the terms that this school provided: play a sport they enjoy and not be denied the opportunity to do so. No title was at stake, no podium finish. Often, as a coach, the boys would ask, "Coach, can we scrimmage the girls?" My response: "No." Training sessions were separate from boys. Due to a female's bone structure, organs, and genetic makeup different from that of the males, the girls' sessions were slower-paced, less aggressive, and emotionally different than I was used to, simply because that is the way God formed male and female in the womb and fearfully and wonderfully created each one of us with a purpose. The girls' response to the boys wanting to scrimmage was most often, "Let's not." These girls knew their limitations and what the boys were capable of. In my experience, the student athletes of this community want to compete at a level they know they are capable of. As of last fall, I have resigned my position. I have, however, not resigned my freedom to stand up for the competitiveness, hearts, and desires of your children and grandchildren. I coached character first so that the graduating students of this school would respect authority and the powers God put in place, not defy them. Should sex distinction, as God ordained it, and sex-based privacy not be protected by this school district, my own daughters will have no participation in RSU 73. Thank you.
Steve Gettle.
Good evening. My name is Steve Gettle, and my wife Sandy and I have been residents of Jay since 1998. We raised our three children in Jay and Spruce Mountain School District. Each of our children participated in various male and female sports and used the boys' and girls' bathrooms respectively. This was simple and a blessing. We've heard a lot tonight about 2021 and Title IX. Well, in 2021, our governor, Janet Mills, when she shut down our state, did not allow the legislature. What?
Quiet, please.
It's a Leatherman. Yes, it does have a blade on it. Okay, keep my time.
Quiet, please.
Our governor, Janet Mills, in 2021 during COVID shut down our state and did not allow the legislature to convene and redefine Title IX, according to her and the Democratic-run legislature vision for our state at that time. We heard a lot about the laws. Well, here she circumvented the law and did it on her own. Genesis 1:27, the Holy Bible states, "So God created man in his own image; in the image that God created he him; male and female created he them." In Matthew 19:4, Jesus answers the Pharisees and says, "But from the beginning of creation, God made male and female." God made male and female, period. When a baby is born, they are respectively called a boy or a girl, based on their specific plumbing that defines their sex. I am here this evening to encourage the board to vote to repeal the current definition of Title IX and adopt the previous correct interpretation of Title IX. Do the right thing morally for Spruce Mountain to take a stand against such foolishness and wickedness and say everyone is either a biological male or female, period. Give the teachers and the staff the power to enforce this simple guidance and bring back sanity in their schools or state in place of business. Proverbs 13:34 states, "Righteousness exalteth the nation, but sin is reproached to any people." You know, God destroyed the entire cities of Sodom and Gomorrah for similar perversion and wickedness against his statutes. On February 25th, Speaker Ryan Fectu and the House Democrats unconstitutionally stripped Republican Representative Laurel Libby of her voice and to vote for her to speak on behalf of Maine Girls. On May 20th, the Supreme Court went on record with, which we already knew, that the actions the Augusta Democrats were were unconstitutional, and her vote must be restored was counted. Yesterday, she was permitted to speak again, finally. The fact is, her ability to represent her district should have never been stripped in the first place. But Augusta Democrats abused their power and took unconstitutional action to silence and voice they fear on any issue they refuse to make right as they continue to allow biological males to dominate women's sports. Proverbs 19:10 says, "The fear of the Lord is beginning in wisdom, and knowledge of the holy is understanding." Our governor and legislature have lost this fear. I won't be silenced. I fear God, not man. I will not sit by and have the governor or our legislature jam transgenderism down my throat, my children, or my grandchildren. I will stand for what God's ways and truths are no matter what the costs are. I stand here tonight to urge you to do the same to vote to restore simple biological male and female definitions as God designed. Have the courage to stand in the gap at such a time as this. Vote for moral truth for RSU 73. It is not the school's place to endorse this promiscuous lifestyle. You have our support. Thank you.
Sheila Lyman.
Hi. Thank you for having me. I didn't prepare anything, and now I'm regretting that. But I am Sheila Lyman, mom first, a daughter that was a four-letter varsity athlete in Livermore Falls High School at the time, number two, citizen of Livermore Falls taxpayer, and number three, the representative for this amazing district. And, you know, I speak to you tonight and thank you for the job that you do because as the minority leader of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee at the state, I understand every time you guys sit down in your horseshoes the challenges you face and facing some tough decisions that you need to make. And based on the testimony tonight, I just remind you that this limited voice is here. You folks, it sounds like, have taken the responsibility to dig into the legal matters, of which there are two very different sides. And there are two, these arguments that you guys need to take into consideration when it comes to ultimately making the decision that you want to make as serving the constituents of these towns. I know on the State Education Committee, we've been posed with some difficult bills: ban all cell phones, curriculum material that they want mandated statewide. I mean, the list could go on, folks. So I understand your challenge. But then the reality is, we will spend a day listening to testimony, those people for, those people against, those folks that are neither one or the other. And they give their arguments why. And then ultimately, it's our decision. And then ultimately, it's our decision to make a choice on what to do with the bill before us. And that's where your challenge is, serving our pre-K through 12th grade minors and making a decision about what's best for all. I find it so unfortunate that the conversation tonight seems to be about separating our kids. That's not what this is about. This is considering what is fair, what's healthy, what's safe for all students, not one particular group of students. And that's your challenge. And I honor your work, I respect your work, and thank you so much.
Board comments. No. Board comments. Roger.
The only comment I wanted to have is I wanted to thank you for the moment of silence for Pam. Pam and I didn't get along politically, but she was an amazing woman who dedicated a boatload of time to our community, and I just want to thank you for that. Again, Pam was wonderful. My apologies and sympathy to her family. And that's all.
Andrew.
I'd like to thank the chair for recognizing Pam Harden tonight, and I'd like to echo Roger's comments as well. Pam made me a better board member because she made sure that things were reported accurately to the best of her ability, and it forced me to make sure that I had to think about what I had to say before I just had something offhand comment. She made me a better board member and a better person, and I'll truly, truly miss her. She spent countless hours at civic meetings like this, which is not easy to do as a member, let alone as an observer, and she showed good judgment, and I appreciate her work, and I will certainly miss her.
Thank you. My comments are very pertinent, obviously. The ongoing debate on whether boys should be allowed to participate in girls' sports or use girls' restrooms and access girls' showers raises significant concerns regarding fairness, safety, and the protection of opportunities that girls have worked tirelessly to secure. First and foremost, it's crucial to recognize the hard-earned achievements of female athletes who have spent years honing their skills and pushing themselves to succeed. Allowing biological males to compete in girls' sports, especially those who may have physical advantages, jeopardizes the integrity of female competitions. Sports by their very nature rely on fair competition where athletes face one another on equal footing. Biological males, on the average, possess advantages in terms of muscle mass, endurance, and overall physicality. These advantages can lead to unfair victories, not because of better training or skill, but due to inherent biological factors. This undermines the achievements of female athletes who have earned their places through dedication and hard work. I just read where in 2017, the U.S. Female Olympic Soccer Team played and all boys under 15 years old to tune up for an upcoming match, and they lost terribly. There is a clear advantage. Moreover, the introduction of boys into girls' spaces such as restrooms and showers creates a host of safety and privacy concerns. These spaces are meant to provide a safe environment for girls to manage personal hygiene and privacy, and the presence of boys regardless of their gender identity can create discomfort and even anxiety for many females. Respecting the privacy of young girls is paramount in ensuring that they can confidently go about their daily routines without fear of being exposed to situations where their dignity might be compromised. Another critical issue is the broader social impact of allowing boys to participate in spaces designated for girls. When biological males are allowed to compete in girls' sports, use their restrooms, or access their showers, it sends a message that the hard work, effort, and resources invested in creating equal opportunities for women are secondary to the desires of a male minority. Girls have fought long and hard for equal treatment and opportunities in sports, education, and other public domains. To allow boys to infringe upon those spaces diminishes the value of those struggles and sends the wrong message about the importance of protecting the achievements of women. While it is important to support the rights and dignity of all individuals, it should not come at the cost of undermining the rights and opportunities of women and girls. Ensuring that girls can compete in sports, use their restrooms, and maintain their privacy without fear or discomfort is essential for fostering a society where everyone is treated with dignity and respect. Ultimately, the solution lies in finding ways to create fair, inclusive environments for all while still ensuring that the opportunities and spaces women have worked so hard, so hard to achieve, are preserved and protected. The distinction between boys and girls in certain areas, particularly in sports and private spaces, remains vital to safeguarding fairness, safety, and equality for women and girls. Nobody wants to remove trans kids from sports. Thank you.
Other board comments. Would either one of our student representatives like to say anything? You don't have to. Sorry. Didn't mean to put you on the spot. Okay. No super-- Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Andrew.
I'd like to thank Holly for the flowers that she presented all the board members tonight. It's very thoughtful and a good use of flowers and spread a little cheer and happiness. Thank you.
Ava.
I know there was some concern with some people that came up to speak about how we would, by going back and complying with the 2025 legal actions, that it would be getting rid of certain sports like bowling, cheering, skiing. That wouldn't be the case. There, it's, to my understanding, especially since I've been on a team where there's been boys and girls, like a track team. The boys compete with the boys category, and the girls compete in a girls' category, yet it is still one team. And that's the same case with bowling and Alpine skiing and other sports like that. So I'd just like to clarify that for everybody.
I just think that I'd like to send as a board, if we may, our best get well wishes to a member who is missing, Brian Riley, who's been very ill, and we are all sending him our best wishes for a complete and quick recovery. So get back with us, Brian.
Other board comments. Darcy.
Quick transition. I don't have a lot for the end of the year. We're just kind of transitioning into our summer work. I will be, as I know, I've talked to you guys a lot about how our mental health focus this year is going to be pretty high, and as I've mentioned, we need to put mental health needs at the forefront of our teaching and learning if we want high academic outcomes. With that said, I'll be attending the E's Maine Annual Convening in July at the University of Maine-Orinno, and this will give me an opportunity to collaborate with other districts and community organizations and state agencies to partner and confront those growing mental health needs. Next month, I'll also be meeting with the Healthy Community Coalition to discuss resources for struggling students with mental health, and I will be meeting with our Tier One SEL curriculum, mind up to kind of kick off our year with getting our teachers some PD and resources for our SEL curriculum. At the start of every day, they spend 30 minutes doing SEL, so it's kind of gearing that rate back up again. At the end of the year, all the students took a trip to the J. Niles Library, and they'll be kicking off the summer reading program this Monday with a magic show, and I hope to see many students there. I miss them terribly, so hopefully I'll get to see a lot. I want to, or we, want to say a big thank you to Gigi's Pizzeria and Horace Mann for supplying staff with lunch both Thursday and Friday, the last week of school. It was a really nice treat that was one less thing staff have to prepare for, so it was really great. And then just today, we decided that we'll be hosting our open house on August 25th at 4:00. And that's all I have.
Questions for Darcy. Elaine.
Darcy, for everybody here, because I know when I was teaching too, we use jargon.
Social, emotional learning.
SEL, that's exactly, because I bet some people here might not know what that means.
Darcy, could you email me a list of the number of students who were held back per grade?
Yep.
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions for Darcy? Holly.
Do you have an outline of the social, emotional learning, what that entails?
The curriculum. I can email you--
Can you email that to me?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
They're actually redesigning it next year. Previously, it was 17 lessons that each grade level did each year. So it was the same 17 each year. Now they're going to redo the curriculum this year, so it's going to be geared towards kindergarten, first grade, and second grading. So it's going to be new resources for the teachers as well. And my social worker is going to now be working with pre-K and special ed as well.
Other questions for Darcy. Thank you.
You're welcome.
TJ.
Good evening, everyone. Before we go any further, I do want to, and I know this is the first night that they've been here, we have Mason Labonte and Aubrey Mitchell. They're here tonight. I'm very thankful for them. They've done a really good job going through the process, and best of luck, and thank you for being here, guys. Yes. Give them a round of applause. Yeah, that's good. Enrollment, I went to look at enrollment. We've already moved out our seniors, so I just need the-- It's going to be around 420, 422, depending on how many come up from the eighth grade. Summer sports have started. If you noticed, basketball's going on tonight. This stuff doesn't stop during the summer. It just keeps going. So if you get a chance to come out, see a game, I'm sure they'd enjoy that. Ninth grade orientation, that is a big one. So August 27th is our ninth grade orientation, and on the 28th, we are doing an open house, and it's a big barbecue that we did last year here. We're going to do it again. Please come to it. Good food, burgers, hot dogs, salads, and it's-- What's that? Yeah. It's a cookout. How you doing? The thing that I handed out to you guys, referring to the suspension comparisons for last year and then this year, if you notice, our in-school suspensions have gone up, our out-of-school suspensions have gone down considerably, and the number of days have gone down considerably. We're only making gains. We're going to keep making gains next year, especially with some of our outside help that come in each day. We have social workers, we have groups that come in and meet with students for vaping, and we have a whole-- It's a 12-week smoking cessation program that kids for habitual offenders, they're going to be doing next year. So there's some really good stuff that's going to happen next year, and we have some really, really outstanding partners here. So, yeah, great. That's what I have.
Thank you. Questions for TJ? Thank you very much. Sherry.
Gosh, they're making my report sound really long tonight. So we ended the 2024-25 school year with 322 students in special education. 16 graduated, so that's why there was the big drop. They graduated with a class of 2025, and then an additional nine students were either dismissed from special education or transferred to other districts. We ended the year with 10 open referrals, which will resume again at the start of the new school year. We were able to complete the referral process for eight students between my May report and today. This year, we processed a total of 46 special education referrals. The primary school ended the year with 67 students in special education. That's down two. The elementary school had 84, which is down one. The middle school, 77, which was down five. And the high school ended the school year with 94 students after the graduation of 16 and one student dismissed from services. We continue to have 13 students out of district in special-purpose private schools for day treatment programming. We have one additional student who will be starting at a special-purpose school on July 1st as part of their extended school year services, and he will become a full-time student beginning in September. The anticipated numbers to begin the school year, the primary school will have 58 students. This includes 12 students we know coming into kindergarten. The numbers typically start pretty low in the primary school, and then referrals come in after they start. The elementary school will start with 80, middle school 76, and the high school 120. We do have, and just to explain that, we have a few classes that-- Currently, all four in the high school, as well as one class that's still in the middle school, that had 25 to 30 students in special education. So that's why they're all landing in the same place at the same time. So that's why that number is so high. We have filled five ed tech positions, three with brand-new hires, and the other two were transfers, so we do still have some open positions. We'd like to hire one high school life skills teacher or a really strong ed tech three. I have one ed tech two and one ed tech one open at the high school as well, one ed tech two at the middle school, an ed tech one at the elementary school, and an ed tech one at the primary school. I also have one part-time occupational therapist position open. I do have applications, so those will be scheduled when I return from vacation. At the last school board meeting, Jenna spoke about two open teaching positions. We did not hire a teacher. However, we have four very strong ed tech threes, they have all been in the district for quite some time, to run the elementary and middle school life skills classrooms. As an ed tech three, teaching and planning can be done as long as weekly check-ins with a certified special education teacher take place. Christina Bamford will maintain the case management duties, as well as split her days between the two programs. She has been the special education teacher of record for the middle school for the last two years. However, she didn't have regularly scheduled visits. The caseload numbers are larger this year, so removing the planning and teaching from her daily responsibilities, it will leave her additional time for direct contact with both programs as the case manager, as well as time for the additional paperwork responsibilities. At the high school, Diane Morey is willing to contract as a case manager to oversee two ed tech threes if we're not able to hire a teacher. We currently have one ed tech three in that program at this time and a potential candidate to interview for the other position when I return from vacation. This is technically vacation, but that's how it works, right? We also have interest in other ed tech positions, as well as a couple of occupational therapy positions. Lastly, Jenna and I spent two very warm days at Sugarloaf this week. Apparently, ski lodges are not made for 98 degrees because the air conditioning couldn't handle it, with other special education administrators from around the state. We received legislative updates that impact special education from the Maine DOE and legal case updates regarding special education from Drummond and Woodson that include Supreme Court cases and changes to Maine law and the impact on special education law across the country. One of the most important aspects of this conference was the guest speaker. Julia DeJesus spoke about improving mental health through human connection. We thought and discussed numerous ideas regarding how to build relationships, trust, and creative, positive environments as leaders. She had us send a quick positive text, write a handwritten note, and other meaningful ways to show we see them and we appreciate them. We're currently living in a very controversial time. I sit at many board meetings, listening to debate, but there's almost always a common theme among all board members. We have fabulous teachers, and we appreciate them. When teachers see the budget get voted down or listen to the controversy amongst board members, they're not feeling seen or appreciated. I have a challenge for all of you. How can you show the staff in RSU 73 that you see them and appreciate them?
Thank you. Thank you. Questions for Sherry? Thank you. Chris.
Good evening. I'm going to start off with our enrollment for the end of the year, which was two hundred ninety-three. On June fourth, we had our eighth grade trip to Fenway, which was a very successful trip. The students got to see a walk-off homerun in the bottom of the ninth from the win. Chase Roke, one of my eighth grade students, was selected to participate in the egg drop from the top of the Green Monster. He successfully dropped his egg from thirty-seven feet, two inches without it breaking. The seventh grade had two successful trips to the Challenger Learning Center in the Coal Transportation Museum. The kids did amazing work, working together for their missions. And they were intrigued by the history of the transportation museum, which is absolutely fantastic. If you get a chance to go up and check it out. Both of the places contacted me and commented on how polite and well-mannered and well-behaved our students were, which is something to be very proud of. On June eleventh, we had a very fun and exciting field day with many activities and games for the students to enjoy themselves. June twelfth was our eighth grade promotion. We had well over six hundred and fifty people in attendance. And they all got to see ninety-eight eighth graders get promoted to the high school. And June thirteenth was a step-up day, and the incoming sixth graders got to see what their first day of middle school is going to be like.
Questions for Chris? Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Elaine.
Well, I was sitting back. I was getting, you know, when you sit like this and I've been turning my neck and now the whole body's... Chris, I wasn't at the last board meeting, but I was able to listen to your report.
Yeah.
Well done. That was so well organized and made that program so clear. I really appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Patrick.
Good evening. So I'm going to talk about the last couple of weeks of school, because that's the most exciting time at the elementary school. We had a fun day. We had the normal three zones. We increased our bounce houses by one, which the kids love. So we had two bounce houses in the wet zone, one in the fun zone. We had a ton of parent volunteers, which was great to see. The kids had a blast. I'm a little sad to say Mrs. McDonald's class was our fifth grade tug-of-war champions. And they came out, talked a lot of smack about beating the teacher team. And I thought, because we had young Mr. Toner on the team, I thought we had a ringer. And they lost horribly. So Mrs. McDonald's class came out as the overall tug-of-war champion. So when they come to the middle school, I think they're going to aim for Mr. Target next. Field trips, we had some great field trips that the kids went on. The fourth grade went to Windsor Fair and went to the New England Livestock Expo. So they got to see about livestock and jobs in livestock and how to take care of livestock in Maine and just all the different things that are available to people that want to work with livestock. So the kids are always excited to see the, you know, all the animals and come back and tell me about it. And I just worry that sometimes maybe they try to talk their parents into getting some of these animals. I just hope that I didn't, you know, tell them to go ask their parents, but I think some of them may have. Third grade did their normal walk to Softy Delight down the trail, which they love. And, you know, it's always a good surprise at the end when they get a little ice cream after, some of them think it's a rather rugged march, but they seem to make it. They seem to make it. Third grade had their planetarium that we've done for years, where they come into the school and they have this huge, giant inflatable planetarium that the kids can go inside of. It's almost like, almost like a bounce house, kind of. And they learn about the planets and the galaxy and all the different things that go on there. So they did, they enjoyed that. One of my favorite days towards the end is when second grade gets to come up and you get to lay your eyes on the new kids coming into third grade next year. I'm excited. They're a much smaller class than we've had over the years. Usually averaging about a hundred kids. This year's eighty-seven. So the kids did great. They came off the bus. They were amazing, asked great questions. I don't know if they were really excited to talk to the principal, but they did. So that was always fun. Our attendance at the end of the year was three hundred. I think the last time I talked to was three oh one. And if you've come down to the elementary, the janitors have already torn it apart and got some of the rooms done and looks great and should be ready to go for August.
I saw some of those bounce houses and I wanted to go and jump myself.
You should have just waited till the end of the day. You could have.
Questions for Patrick? Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing. No committee reports. Looking for a motion regarding Title IX based on the executive session legal advice.
Now therefore be it resolved that the RSU seventy-three district school board hereby directs the superintendent to, number one, amend all district policies to align with the Title IX as reformed by Executive Order fourteen two zero one, recognizing only two sexes, male and female. Number two, ensure that all private spaces within the district, such as, but not limited to, bathrooms, locker rooms, and overnight accommodations for field trips are designated and assessed according to sex. Number three, require all applicable extracurricular activities and athletic teams to be separated by sex to preserve safety and fairness. Number four, provide written notice to the district and public ensuring transparency and compliance with the original intent of Title IX and Executive Order fourteen two zero one. Protection of sex-based privacy in our district policies. Number five, the superintendent and policy committee will review and change all gender-applicable policies and return to the board for appropriated readings as per board policy.
Do I have a second? Discussion. Don.
Am I understanding that we're going to refer this to policy? Or are we actually voting on making this happen now?
We're voting on it, and then the policy will have to be changed. You don't have the first and second reading.
So we're, we are not passing this. We are, we are voting to move it to committee and then there'll be a vote on the final policy. Correct?
We're voting to pass the motion that she said, which says that there are only two genders. And then it will go to the policy committee to weed out all those policies that apply to that. And then those will come back for first and second reading as per board policy.
Okay.
Makes sense?
I just, I just want to be clear on what we're voting on.
Right.
Everybody knows my stance. But I just wanted to make sure that it's going to go through the proper policy development. And more than ever, we need to make sure, as emotionally charged up as this is, we need to make sure that we do everything correct.
The board policy will be enforced, that it will go, all the policies will come back to the board for a first and second reading after the policy committee.
Okay. And just another quick thing. What does the timeline look like for the first and second readings? Will this be something we handle in September?
We, we haven't discussed timelines yet. I'm not sure. We may have to have a July meeting if we have new hires. So we may be able to have a policy committee before then. If not, it'll be pushed back to August.
And then obviously, whatever policy is developed, it would be run by which law firm?
Drummond and Woodson.
Drummond and Woodson. Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
As many of you are aware, I do not have a vote on this issue, but I do have an opinion. This issue has been on the back burner for some time now. And from the beginning, my position has been that this is not something that the school board should be voting on at this time. I believe it should be settled in either the legislature, the courts, or if allowable, by state referendum. Now that the issue is on the front burner, I still feel the same way. We need to have patience. We need to let it play out in the courts, seeing that at this time, the state legislator, legislature has voted not to change our state law. Please be patient. That's what Drummond and Woodson shared with us. It's in the court system now. Let them take care of it. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Elaine.
I'm going to take the same stance when we voted in the current policy that we did several months ago. That is, it matters not what my personal opinion is on this. My job is to follow the law. The same law I asked several of you when you took your, were nominated for positions here. Where are you going to follow Maine law? I'm standing with Maine law, and I want the policy to sit at the 2020 place where it is right now. And we wait for the courts to figure this out, and then we act. I agree, Scott, and I stand firmly on that.
My position is also that we follow the law that's in place. I know there's a lot of popular opinion on both sides to make people feel good and feel better about things. The court of public opinion is well-known. But as a legal basis, I think we need to let the courts play this out, despite what some of our feelings may be. I feel we should delay this motion and refer it to committee as another time. I think we should defeat this motion.
Holly.
I want to thank everybody that's here in support of Title IX and everybody that has sent emails in support of Title IX. And I think we owe our girls in this district, our taxpayers of this district. We owe them a vote of standing behind girls and no boys in girls' sports.
Any other board comments? Okay, we have a motion on, that's been seconded in. Can I have a roll call, Laura, please?
Do I need the pillows? Yes. Dawn Emery?
Yes.
Elaine, you're...
No.
Sarah Jameson?
No.
Ava Moffett?
Yes.
Rashawn Moffett?
Yes.
Alie Morris?
Yes.
Roger Moe?
Yes.
Carrie Lele?
Yes.
Anthony Sylvester?
No.
And Dawn Stroh?
Yes.
Motion carries. Quiet, please. She has left. She left the meeting. I entertain a motion to enter into executive session to discuss personnel matter pursuant to one MRSA four oh five six A. Do I have a second? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Question. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Question. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Question. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Question. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Question. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Question. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Question. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Steve Bailey. Looking for a nomination to the dean of students position for Matthew Charlin and the music teacher, Mariah Charlin. Elaine? Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Question. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Question. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Question. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Question. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Question. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. The superintendent would like to carry over five vacation days. Seconded by Elaine. Question. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. to represent you from Region Six, Western Maine, from Region Six. So we make up basically in terms of who's elected to the board, and they demonstrate and represent the positions within the Legislative Committee and the Delegate Assembly as those are held each year. So it's not that we're liberal, it's not that we're conservative, it's where the people are and what they think should be happening in the best interest of students. And that is one of the things that I do want to talk about. One of the next thing, okay, I do want to try to keep it informal as much as possible. Are there other questions you might have in terms of wanting to learn about certain things as we have our time together tonight? Okay, then I'll just kind of keep it rolling and we'll come to an ending point when you think you've had enough. Right now, I would like to just kind of reiterate, and the first five or six people that went tonight, this is one of our typical slides, it wasn't made special for tonight. As school board members, you probably have received this earlier from me in the spring, but each of you did swear an oath when you were first elected, before you could attend and vote at a meeting. And basically, this is the oath that you all take. You're supposed to be faithfully discharging, to the best of your abilities, the duties incumbent on you as the school director of RSU-73, according to the Constitution and laws of this state. I just need to say that.
That's the last one.
And it says, "So help me God."
Constitution of the United States.
It doesn't say that.
That's what you're saying.
If that is your oath, from RSU-73, from the town of what? Jay. Okay. Constitution as well as, it's both constitutions. It's going to be the Constitution of the state, as well as the Constitution of the United States. But it's a constitution. It's the constitution.
But not in Maine, not in the United States.
And it's the constitution, okay? It's not executive order. It's the constitution, as well as the laws of the state. So in that particular case, this is one of the things, it's a guiding premise of being an, this isn't just school board members, this is for all elected officials. It's not just for school board members. So we'll move forward. I would just say also, you are the governing body for the school administrative district. You are the governing body for RSU-73. And the statutory duties that are made for you do come from Title 20A, MSRA Section 1, in Section 1001, and there are 22 different duties that are given to school boards. And they're given to the full school board, they're not given to individual school members, school board members. They're given to the full board. And so you only have authority as a school board member when you're coming together collectively to meet within your board. That's where you can make decisions, that's where items are put on the agenda for you to consider and then be able to make decisions, like you did tonight. You have RSU-73 Policy BBA, which provides you their powers and responsibilities of boards. That is one of the handouts that's in your packet on the right-hand side, Board Powers and Responsibilities. It would be handout number two, I believe, because number one is the one that provides information about what the powers are based on what the state statutes are. So your Code Policy BBA is your board powers and responsibilities. The next handout that I want to go over is handout number three on your right-hand side. And this is an important one, and it's one that's not well-understood, but it is an important one, based on how you operate as a board and who you're responsible to. There was a time about three or four years ago where the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee asked for an opinion, and there was a bill that tried to go through that said that school board members would be responsible to the taxpayers or to the citizens. And that question was raised, and Sarah Forster, the Assistant Attorney General, was asked to respond to that particular question, and a statement was read back and written back to Pendarmay and the Commissioner of Education. So in your handouts, number three, there is, based on a court case in Yarmouth, Maine, there's a part of a paragraph here that I want to make sure that people understand in terms of kind of a joint responsibility that you have, but also what your primary responsibility is. So in this particular instance, based on the Shaw versus, Shaw versus Small, a court case in Yarmouth, Maine, the Maine Constitution affords control over education to the Maine Legislature. So you are a function of the Legislature. You're not a function being created by your town officials. Your towns didn't collectively create RSU-73, nor did it create a school board in either any of your individual towns when you were organized differently. You are organized through the statutes that are set up by the Maine Legislature. And as such, school boards are creatures of statute with their duties and responsibilities described herein. "The nexus of the concern about school boards' responsibilities for and responsive to their respective communities appears to be the statement contained in the decision of the Maine's Law Court." And I want to talk about this more, so don't please just get caught in this paragraph, but I do want to talk about what this means a little bit as well. "The school committee acts as a public board. It in no sense represents the town. Its members are chosen by the voters of the town, but after election, they are public officers deriving their authority from the law and responsible to the state for the good faith and rectitude of their acts." So this is a guiding principle in terms of how school boards are created, where they get their duties and their powers and responsibilities, it's from the Legislature. It's not from your town councils, it's not from your city councils, it's not from your selectmen. It's from the Legislature that provides you with the responsibility of providing education for your students here within RSU-73. So this particular case, it also identifies and represents that, yes, you do pay attention to, you do hear your neighbors, your citizens that you live next to, you do hear what the concerns are within your communities. But the essential responsibility that you have, and we'll look at this in a slide in another minute, is really your essential responsibility is to the students and to the best interests of the district. And so those two things combined, it's where you come together with your different towns that make up RSU-73, in terms of all students, all your buildings, all your facilities, all your staff members, all of your transportation and your food service personnel, to be able to make sure that you're providing, you know, what's in the best interest of students, as well as what's in the best interest of the district. So in that particular way, you're working together as a team to think about what's necessary and what can we do to be able to make sure that we're providing for everybody, for all of our students, within all of our schools and all of our district facilities. Do you have any questions about that? Because I'd like to make sure we get them, if you do have those kinds of questions about that particular statement. Does that sound conflicting to you at all? Yes, go ahead. And I can't see name tags, so. Okay, thank you, Andrew.
So if I understand, the board, if you're elected to the board, the number one, is that representative accountable to the operation of the district?
That's correct.
How do we balance that in fact, do we, do we have something to be responsible, do we get to, and we need to take away the, the, yeah?
Well, that's very carefully, because you do have, you've got the students in their best interest and the best interests of districts on this hand, you do have, on the other hand, the interest that citizens and other folks are saying to you about, look, we can only sustain so much. And so you do that in your budget deliberations, you do that in your program conversations, you do that in what you think you can consider and be able to support. So that's, has to be, you know, part of your fiscal responsibility in terms of understanding and representing. But in terms of when you're thinking about, okay, thinking of all kids, well, what does that mean? What does that mean in terms of your special education needs? What does that mean in terms of numbers of students within a particular class, you know, within a particular grade span? Those are all those kinds of things you have to consider. What can we do? What can the town support in having those kinds of conversations? So anytime you're putting together a budget, you are, you're taking into account all those different considerations and hearing in the background too, well, I don't think they're going to be able to support that. I don't think they're going to go for that. We need to look at this in this particular area. However, you as an elected school board official, I would continue to say, you need to be the strongest advocates, you know, in the district for what you think is needed for your kids to be able to have what you feel you want, you know, for that education system within RSU-73. So you can advocate, you know, for the students' understanding. You're in a much better place than a lot of other people who don't have the access to the information you do, and the people being able to report to the superintendent report to you in terms of what's needed to be able to make our system go. And if you can't say it, if you can't, I mean, your budget has to become your budget, the budget that's adopted. You need to be able to both support it and be able to explain it, to say, this is really, really important for us to be able to make sense of how we're going to operate as a district. So I'm glad you asked the question, Andrew. I don't know if I've explained it enough to be, I know you deal with it on a regular, you know, yearly basis, but it is one of those things, you do have to deal with knowing that, you know, your students and the best interests of the district are going to be, you know, your first and primary goal. Okay? Other related questions to that? Okay. So we did talk some about this really quickly, but you campaign as individuals, but then you serve as a member of a team, and you're coming together as a variety of folks from different, different towns and different communities, different neighborhoods. You don't have any authority except when acting as part of the majority of the board. This is where I was going, where I was talking about this before. You're representative really of, and you are somewhat different than thinking about you as being a legislator, because either a legislator or a selectman or someone who's elected as a town councilor, you're going to be thinking of everything you're hearing about. You're going to be thinking about information from the school department, you're going to be thinking about people you see around town, and you're going to be thinking about them, those voices are going to be in your head as different interests come up. But while you know them and while you are hearing them, you want to vote and voice your interest on behalf of the best overall interest of the organization, which really is students and the district. So that's where this comes together and where it is a little bit different than a legislature who is elected by a number of people within their district or in their senate district, and then they go to Augusta and you, or we talk to folks in Washington and want them to vote, you know, based on what we feel our interests are within our particular geographic area. That's not how a school board member works entirely. You do have to make sure that you're paying attention to what the best interests of the organization, meaning students and district, are. And again, that would be your, that would be your first and foremost interest. So you're representative of, you're not representative for. One of the things I do want to speak about here, though, and this is really important, that you as board members and all of our school folks who work within schools, we very definitely feel that we have parents as partners, and the importance of this can't be overstated. Schools work with parents' guardians as partners, provide instruction and learning for students. You have various rights that are afforded to you in both federal law as well as state law that provides those kinds of parent, both rights, responsibilities, and expectations. We have, MSMA has a sample policy KB, Parent Involvement in Education, and that's handout number four in your packet. If you want to take a look at that, in the right-hand side, it's a couple pages long. So that's a very important part of anything that we provide in terms of school board training, trying to assure that parents are feeling included, parents are feeling engaged, as well as parents are feeling they have an important and responsible role to play, and that schools are making sure that they're not just putting that information out as lip service, but it really is an invested, engaged, you know, part of this partnership. So we would want to make sure that that is both heard and as well as felt. Another aspect of your board work does come together as it relates to how does the board interact with the superintendent? As a board, you have one employee. You hire the superintendent. You don't, you go through the motion, I say the motion of approving other folks to be hired, but your act is really only to hire the superintendent. The superintendent recommends, nominates, you approve, and unless you approve, he can't hire. If you do approve, then he can hire. But it's a three-step process, and even if the second step is approved, with you as a board adopting, approving a particular nomination, the superintendent can even at that stage say, "I found out other information, and it's not in the best interest, it's not a value add." You know, for the superintendent to say, "I've decided, we're not going to be hiring this individual." He probably would come back to you and give you some indicated reason as to why that would be. However, that three-step process has to be in place. He has to nominate, you have to approve, and he has to hire. That's specifically in law for teachers and for principals. Those are the two positions that are in law where he has to do that. So as a board, you're going to be thinking and working within the vision, mission, goals, and policy end of things. You're going to be looking at what are the end results? What is it the, do we have a vision of what we want as a high school graduate coming from RSU-73? And what would that look like? You're also going to be asking questions, like you did tonight, what, why, and how much? Those are the kinds of things that you as board members would be asking while the superintendent's going to be involved in other types of specific activities that relate to the how we're going to get there, what the means are, thinking about objectives, action plans, regulations, procedures. He's going to be recommending to you, you're going to be talking about it, you're going to be voting on it. If there's a vote to implement something, you're going to send it back to the superintendent for that implementation to happen at the administrative and/or school level. The biggest thing I probably can talk about on this particular slide is looking at the importance of communication and trust. You had trust when you first hired the superintendent. As you work with the board, as you have new members come on, you're going to continue to elaborate on communication, both with him and amongst yourselves, and that we want to try to have the communication continue to grow. I'd like to think about that from the standpoint of you're always trying to make investments into a trust bank, and the more you can do that, the bigger the trust goes. From time to time, you end up having withdrawals. And that's kind of a situation where the trust might get a little sketchy, and then you work on, you know, what do we need to do to be able to continue to improve the communication and improve that trust again? So that's always a give and take, back and forth situation of trying to make sure you maintain a strong level of trust between superintendent and the board and your role as a board. Any question on this slide in terms of role of the board versus role of the superintendent? No? Okay. You do have an important policy in your handouts on the right-hand side. This is Policy BDD. It is the Board of Directors and Superintendent Relationship, and so that is one that is important for you to know as well, and you also have that slide that I shared with you. Another important policy that I'm going to go to next is Policy, it's Policy BCA in your handout also on the right-hand side. This one is going to be your Code of Ethics, RSU-73 Policy BCA. This is very similar to policies that other boards have, and essentially, it is a series of I-will statements, and while they may be aspirational, it's important for you as a board to be able to take a look at these, identify what does this actually mean for us as a board? What does this actually mean for you as individual board members as you work together with each other on the board? The piece I didn't talk about with regard to the policies way back at the beginning is that your policy manual really is your owner's guide. It really identifies, how are we going to function as a school district? And while I did say at the very beginning that those policies you should support, as well as be supported by statute, and so that's typically where those policies come from, your Code of Ethics, your school board member Code of Ethics really become your job description in terms of your individual roles, what do I need to do to be able to be a successful board member, working together with the other members on the board? So if you haven't, I do know that this was adopted in August of '72, it was reviewed and revised, or at least reviewed back in February of this last year. So it's something you've taken a look at fairly recently. We often say this is a good thing to take a look at after you've done your organization meeting and identified who your chair is going to be, so that new board members coming on have the opportunity to be able to discuss and explore, you know, what their individual roles are within their Code of Ethics. This is a piece I would just urge you This is a piece I would just urge you to consider and remember, that as school board members, it's important to think about, okay, well, what is my board, what is my role as a board member? And one of the things really is to think about recognizing your responsibilities not to operate the schools, but to see that they are well-operated. With your one employee, the superintendent, if you have questions, it's him you want to be asking questions about, and have him find answers and bring them back to you in terms of a board meeting to be able to provide reports, or have other people report to you as to the particular question you might have of him. So another piece, and this is important for new board members as well as people who've been on the board for a while, your email usage is determined by the right-to-know, the law, the Right to Know Access Act. And the Right to Know Access Act essentially says that you can't conduct business via email. You have to be able to conduct your business in the sunshine, within an advertised public meeting, and not have email subvert the intent of you being able to get together publicly to be able to conduct your business. So that's an important policy. Typically, that is Policy BEA, and I think that's in the right-hand side of your packet, and it's your handout number 11. And it is Policy BEA. Another part of this policy is that you want to make sure that anything that you conduct through email, and I would say text or any other type of social media that's written, is that anything like that, that is about school business, can be considered a public record, and therefore it's accessible through a Freedom of Access Act request, and you just have to be very cautious that you're not doing things illegally or under the shade of darkness with regard to the Freedom of Access Act. So in that regard, there's another piece of this that is in your policy, and it's letter C of your policy. "Board members shall avoid reference to confidential information about employees, students, or other matters in email communications because of the risk of improper disclosure." You have a responsibility to keep information that's private, private. You have a responsibility of keeping confidential information private. And so therefore, this Policy BEA is something that you make sure you want to honor as well. There are two other handouts in there that do relate to social media, use of social media by board members, and they're also in your packet on the right-hand side. There is a sample policy from MSMA. Board member use of social media is Policy BEB, and perhaps this is something that you may want to take a look at to consider, you know, through your policy committee. Is this something that we want to consider and adopt, you know, for the board? A graphic that we often use, just because sometimes social media can be problematic for folks, just don't do it. If you can avoid it, just, you know, try to use your communication via phone or via in-person and not resort to having to go through social media to be able to express your opinions. And I say there are other guidelines within your packet, and I'm going to work through other slides now. One of the things that we do, and I saw this in action, that you want to continue to work on as a board, because you do want to consider yourself as a team and think about how we can work together to be able to work in the best interests of our students and the best interests of our district. There are times that you're going to receive concerns or complaints from folks within the community. You do have, in your packet, there's another handout. It is Policy, we'd be Policy KEB. This is Complaints About School Personnel. And it's important for board members to know your policy, especially know this one, to be able to identify that how you handle this is real. It's important that you follow the chain of command and not try to be the savior or the person that tries to solve the problem for the person providing the complaint. But see if you can help the individuals try to resolve the issue, if it's in the classroom, at the classroom level, if it's at the school level with the principal, if it's a district issue with a district director, if it's within special education, perhaps with a special education director, and if need be, refer them to the superintendent. Things should come to the school board really only at the highest level after they've had the opportunity to be able to be considered and dealt with at other levels, trying to encourage meaningful conversation and consideration for how it can be resolved at a very early This next policy, Policy BEDH, which I know you have, we did make some changes to our sample policy back in October of 2023. And right now, you'll see the slide up on the, the policy up on the slide. The title is different than yours. It says Public Comment at Board Meetings Versus Public Participation at Board Meetings. And while the title, the words are slightly different, there is a nuance there that really does speak to, the intent of the law is a school board meeting, public comment period. And this provides an opportunity for members of the public to speak on school and education matters at a school board meeting, and this needs to happen at any full meeting of the school board. Doesn't include meetings at subcommittees. So subcommittee meetings, you can allow it, but you don't have to allow it. So one of the changes was the public participation changed to a public comment. And the other, the other change that was made, and this was made based on some court cases that were national court cases, but there is a section in the sample policy, and I'd ask you to take a look if you would, at handout number 19. It's not going to show up on the screen, so if you could find handout number 19 in your packet, it's toward the end. And on that handout, number 19, on the back of the third page, you'll see a letter heading 3C speaks to "Discussion of Personnel Matters is Not Permitted During the Public Comment Period Due to the Privacy Confidentiality and Due Process Rights of School Unit Employees." For purposes of this policy, discussion of a personnel matter means any discussion of job performance or conduct of a school unit employee, including complaints or positive slash complimentary comments about them. The change in the policy was that last part in terms of positive slash complimentary comments about them. The reason why this is in there is because the court case determined that in a public comment session, that comments needed to be viewpoint neutral. You couldn't say, you couldn't allow good things but not allow bad things. And so the court case determined that it needed to be viewpoint neutral. So that's during the public comment period. It does not mean that you as school board members and through your superintendent's report, your principal reports, or your school chair report, you can't, you can provide time within there to highlight certain, you know, positive things that are going on within your, within your schools. So it does provide that opportunity within your agenda setting to be able to provide that. Yes, and again, I can't see names, sorry. So even a positive one might be talking about Mrs. Jones and how she, you know, did a terrific job, you know, leading her class, you know, in her physical education activity in terms of the fun day. And unfortunately, that can't be stated, you know, within a public comment session, much like you can't say, Mrs. Jones, oh, boy, she did a terrible job in terms of, you know, leading and providing safety, you know, for the students out on the fun day the other day. So you can't allow one and not the other. It has to be viewpoint neutral. Yes?
Having more to say, tonight I made comments to a principal, but they did one too well, they sent me a laugh, you know, although I wasn't here, so I meant that due to the first question, is that too much positive?
That was under board comments, it wasn't under public comment.
It was under public.
That's right, yes. And that's where, again, you have on your agenda and you have within your policy, public participation at board meetings, and the only change that our sample policy suggests is that you call it public comment at school board meetings versus public participation. You see the difference? And I have one more thing. The last thing is, as board members, as board, because you do come together, you work together as a board, the very last couple of policies speak to school board evaluation, self-evaluation. If you can consider during your organizational times, because of, and again, in your packet, you have information about what effective boards do, there is a sample policy in there, BBAB, that does speak about the board itself, you as a board, you're looking at yourself in terms of how are we doing as a board? Not rating individual members, but how are you doing as a board? And there are 29 questions in there that really can be answered by you all, and then perhaps debriefed, you know, within a meeting to be able to say, okay, well, how are we doing here? How are we doing there? You know, does it make sense for us to be able to take a look at, are there things that we could do that would strengthen our role in helping our students succeed within our schools? So that self-evaluation, if not every year, perhaps every other year, just to see, to do a check-in, just like you do a check-in with your superintendent, just like your superintendent does check-ins with your principals and other staff members. It's a good idea for you to consider, you know, how about yourself as a board? How are we doing? And what can we do better to be able to help support our students in our district? So with that, probably 25 minutes, but 35 minutes, but.
Thank you.
Are there questions you have? I know you're anxious to get home as well.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. You've heard that.
Just take a minute to pick out.
We have your sheet with personnel information on it. As I said earlier in the meeting, we may have to have a July meeting if we have hires that come up. And for those on the policy committee, if you can email me some possible dates that you are all available, that would be appreciated. Elaine.
We didn't have finance, just a question. We didn't have a finance meeting tonight, and I know that there are warrants, there will be warrants throughout the summer. Will we remind you, Elaine, just if we could, if you'll up?
Yeah, your pink sheets, if you can leave them in your folder and leave them for Laura.
And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Michelle and seconded by Elaine. All those in favor?
Discussion.
I'm not kidding.
Yeah, discussion. Yeah, Don.
I just noticed that one of the board members stood up in the middle of the meeting and walked out. And this is the second. Would you say that as a chair, you would speak with this member?
Absolutely.
Because I actually consider.
All those in favor? opposed? Motion?